Good evening.
Good evening.
We will start off tonight with prayer and pledge. I'm gonna ask Councilman Ball to surrender another prayer for me.
Oh, thank you.
And Councilwoman Sylvia to do the pledge, please.
If you all bow your heads if you'd like to, please. In the name of God, the most gracious and most merciful. We come to you today, God, to do the business of the city. And we hope and pray that everybody that live in the city is safe this evening and tomorrow. And Lord, we make a special prayer for all the people that serve the city, police, the fire, and all the administrators in the city of Saginaw. And God, we ask you to look over the city council that we may conduct business in a good, orderly, and fashion manner. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Sylvia?
Present.
Councilmember Williams is absent. Councilmember Balls?
Present.
Mayor Protem Bench?
Present.
Member Ostash?
Present.
Councilmember Garcia?
Present.
Councilmember Flores is absent. Councilmember Copeland is absent. And Mayor Moore?
Present.
You have six members present and three absent.
Well, good evening again. The purpose of this meeting of city council, I ask that the audience remain from clapping, booing, and any obnoxious behavior. Let me do this with all of my council persons. My fellow council persons, please put your phones on silent as well as your tablet. Audience, I ask that you please put yours on silent as well because that is very disruptive when it goes off and some mics talking. Madam Clerk, do we have any announcements?
We have a couple. The convenience station will be open this Saturday, May 11th, from 8:00 a.m. through noon. City residents can drop off items not picked up at the curb and any other miscellaneous bulky items. And also, the city has hired three police officers, and Chief Ruth will come forward to introduce them for the oath of office.
Thank you very much, Clerk Bozeman, Mayor, city council members. I have three new officers to present to you. They'll be new officers in a few minutes. They went to the Delta College Police Academy in January of this year, and they proudly graduated last Friday, several of them with honors from the Delta Police Academy. They did an outstanding job. I'm extremely proud of every single one of them. Jenna Nyquist, can you please step forward? Megan Mahorni, please step forward. And Peter Miller. Clerk Bozeman, can you administer the oath?
If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the state of Michigan.
And the state of Michigan.
And I will faithfully perform the duties
I will faithfully perform the duties.
of the office of police officer
Of the office of police officer.
for the city of Saginaw
For the city of Saginaw.
according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay, and then if you would step over to me and sign the oath. Thank you.
Okay, now for the pinning of the badge. For Jenna Nyquist, Officer Jenna Nyquist, could we have her father, Edward, please I'm proud of every single one of you. Go forth and be great police officers in the city of Saginaw. And always remember one thing. Get out of your car, talk to the community, engage the community. You don't get off that easy. Turn around so we can get some photos. You see kids playing, stop the car, get out, play with them. Come on. Look over here and smile. They gotta make you rock stars here on Facebook tomorrow. Play basketball, play football, whatever, catch.
That's official.
Engage with the community. Okay, thank you. Just don't stay hidden in that patrol car. Great. That's what makes a great police officer, all the way around. Gotta get 'em all. Good deal. And I know all three of you are just gonna be outstanding police officers to help, you Congratulations. I know you're proud. know, serve our citizens here in the city of Saginaw. Officer Megan Mahorni, her mother Cindy. Thank you very much. If you could go around and shake the council people's hands.
Thanks for your service.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, y'all stand there and get some pictures.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Mama, get up there with her.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Get up there with her, honey. It is always exciting to do this part of this job. She wouldn't be here.
All right, congratulations. Thank you. Officer Peter Miller and his mother, Amy Kayla.
Parents, we thank you. We thank you for loaning your child to us, and we're gonna take good care of him. I like that. It's woman power tonight. And it's Mother's Day weekend. For sure, mamas. Madam Clerk.
That takes us to the proclamation that's on the agenda. It's declaring May 2024 as Mental Health.
Do we have a representative?
Yes.
Come on up, honey. What does that say? Come on down. The proclamation will be read by Councilwoman Garcia.
The city of Saginaw proclamation, whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall physical health and emotional well-being, and whereas mental health will strike one in five adults and children in a given year, regardless of age, gender, race, ethnicity, religion, or economic status, and whereas people who have mental illnesses can recover and lead full productive lives, and whereas an estimated two-thirds of adults and young people who have mental health disorders are not receiving the help they need, and whereas the cost of untreated and mistreated mental illnesses and addictive disorders to American business, government, and families has grown 113 billion annually, and whereas community-based services that respond to individual and family needs are cost-effective and beneficial to consumers and the community, and whereas the National Mental Health Association and its national partners observe Mental Health Month every May to raise awareness and understanding of mental health and illness. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Brenda F. Moore, Mayor, city of Saginaw, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Mental Health Month in the city of Saginaw. I also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the state of Michigan to recommit to our community the increasing awareness and the understanding of mental health and the need to appropriate accessible services for all people who have mental illnesses. And witness of wherefore, I have here on to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed the sixth day of May in the year of the Lord 2024. Brenda F. Moore, Mayor, councilmembers Annie Bench, Mayor Protem, Michael D. Balls, George Copeland Jr., Michael Flores, Persella Garcia, Monique Lamar Silva, Bill Ostash, and Reggie Williams, Aunt Timothy Morales, the city manager.
Come on up now. Shake our hand. Get your proclamation, then you gonna talk.
Okay. Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you and good evening. My name is Stacy, and I am one of many individuals in Saginaw County currently living with a mental health condition. On behalf of myself, those accompanying me tonight, and other citizens affected around the city and county, I accept this proclamation.
Yeah, that takes us to public hearings. Would you like to read the rules?
The purpose of the public hearing is for the public to address council as a whole and for council to hear comments that the speaker has regarding specific actions requested. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of the public hearing. Please state your name and say if you are in support or opposition of the public hearing. The main speaker or the designated representative should speak first. They will be allowed 10 minutes. Any additional speakers have three minutes. This is not a question or answer period. The appropriate department will get with you to tell you where we go from there. Madam Clerk.
The public hearing is regarding the request to establish an obsolete property rehabilitation district at 122 South Hamilton Street.
Do we have anyone to speak to this matter?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Eric Tankersley with the Shaheen Development Organization. I'm coming before you this evening to talk about our redevelopment project, which is located at 122 South Hamilton Street in Saginaw's Old Town District. The redevelopment that we're proposing will transform the obsolete property into space for retail and professional commerce. The site consists of a three-story, 10,900-square-foot vacant building that was constructed in 1864. We're projecting total cost for the project of approximately $1.7 million. The redevelopment of the property will consist of exterior improvements to masonry, electrical, windows and glass, drainage, signage, paint, and on the interior, the building in entirety will be renovated. Major structural renovations will consist of an elevator installation, structural steel and beam replacement, substantial roof, and finished carpentry, as well as HVAC and plumbing, flooring, kitchen equipment. I think you get the picture, essentially a full renovation job. Construction is expected to commence here in the spring of 2024 with completion planned for late '24 or early '25. On the first floor, the building will be occupied by Michigan Cream and Sugar Ice Cream Company, which offers a local, handcrafted, and high-quality ice cream. They're a high-quality ice cream manufacturer and seller with milk coming from local dairy farmers in the Great Lakes Bay region. On the second and third floor, the space will be composed of 3,400 square feet of attic-style storage, as well as office space for a professional accountancy firm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this public hearing? Last and final time. Yes. Yeah, come up.
How y'all doing today? My name is Isaac Campbell. I'm a Saginaw resident. I'm coming today. I have a concern.
Okay. We're doing a public hearing. You're probably on the list. You're on the list to speak for public hearing. So I'll call you back up shortly. Okay? You're fine. You're fine. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this subject? One last time. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this subject? I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, ayes have it. Madam Clerk.
We are at public input.
Speakers, you are to remain courteous and respectful at all times. The clerk will call you to the podium. You have three minutes to speak, in which is being timed by the clerk. I ask that you get all of the information that you need to say within that three minutes. You will be timed. Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker is Melanie Velasco. Speakers, Mary Givon Lewis and John Lewis Jr. canceled prior to the meeting, so they are not here. We will move on to Isaac Campbell.
Hello again. My name is Isaac Campbell. I'm a Saginaw resident. I'm coming today. I have a concern about the black youth and education. And I feel like people should reconsider with their school. I understand what you guys are trying to do, and I'm trying to give them a chance with learning, but it's limiting their options in education. My niece said she would like to go to more schools. I feel like we should be restoring more schools, like restoring schools like Emerson and Central like that. It's things that these kids need to see outside. They need to see activities and more boys' and girls' clubs. It needs to be more restored over there in the city so they can see things. And when you promote more education, it promotes more peace, and these kids can be more peaceful. It's a lot of kids getting in a lot of trouble because they don't have things to do, and that needs to be addressed. And it's very sad to see. And it took me to really come up here, and that weighed heavy on me. And I said, somebody really needs to bring that to their attention. And I know you guys are trying to help, but I feel like when you put kids to all-in-one school and they get on the bus like that, that causes conflicts, and some people is not even noticing that. So I really wanted to bring that to y'all's attention, and thank you.
Thank you, son.
Our next speaker is Brad Holt.
My name is Brad Holt. I was hired at the Saginaw Police Department in 2008. I was a field training officer, a support officer on the emergency services team, and a K-9 handler handling K-9 Seagun. In 2017, I was the Saginaw Police Officer of the Year. Chief Ruth stated at that time, I quote, "A good model officer who collaborated with citizens, he's hardworking, goes above and beyond at work and off work," end quote. I like to think he was right. Many times, when something happened in the city, citizens would call me personally on my cellphone and fill me in on what they knew. I worked hard at my job and had great connections with the community that took years to establish and build. Unfortunately, my loyalty to the city of Saginaw was not reciprocated. When I was hired, I was told, and our contract showed, that I had retirement healthcare with a vesting schedule based on how many years I would work for the city. However, without ever being negotiated and without fair due process, this benefit was deceitfully taken away by someone by just going into the contract and deleting that language and changing it. Throughout my time as an officer, I was put in many dangerous situations. During most of the years of service here, our department was greatly understaffed, making already dangerous jobs in a dangerous city just that much worse. By the grace of God, I'm still here, but things have gone the other way many multiple times. It's depressing to know that officers hired before me and officers hired after me all have some sort of healthcare protection in place should something happen to them, but myself and only four of my other coworkers have no such protections. Ultimately, the stress of having no safety net in place should I be injured, killed, or unable to work for any reason was too much to handle. My main responsibilities to my family and the city's unethical dealings created a situation where my family would not be taken care of if something bad were to happen to me. Last year, I made the difficult decision to end my career after 15 loyal years of service to this city, much shorter than I planned on and wanted to. I wanted to do my full 20, 25 years here. In the long run, the city has stolen benefits for me and saved some money, but it's the citizens who lost a good police officer. Much of the money the city has saved has been and will continue to be spent amounting legal fees related to this case. Regardless of this three-year ongoing legal case, each of you has the power and authority to end this charade. I ask this council to have the fortitude to demand that their lone employee right this wrong that they've done. And to the new officers, I thank you for coming onto the police department, but I hope they don't do the same thing to you that they did to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matthew Carpus.
Matt Carpus, Saginaw Police Command Union. Last council meeting, I explained to this board how one day I had retirement healthcare benefits. Should I be put a certain amount of years of service to the city, next day I didn't. Change wasn't made through negotiations, and the employees were not made aware of it. I think my handouts at the last meeting demonstrated this. I want to make a couple more points and ask a few more questions. I'd like to know what kind of message this sends employees of the city when changes can be made to their contract without them voting on it, let alone even knowing about it? What kind of message does it send to citizens and the businesses that the city deals with? That you'll exploit any technicalities you possibly can, ethical or not, just to try to squeeze you for whatever you can? I know there's members of this council that got upset when Darnell Early left here after only eight years of service and got retirement healthcare. I could potentially do 26 years of service, have no healthcare, no healthcare savings plan, no nothing. I'm gonna compare my 16 years of service to Mr. Early's. I doubt he missed a number of holidays with his family that I have, been called in the middle of the night to come to work in emergencies, or experienced horrible events that have kept him up at night. I need to restate this. I got 16 years, twice the amount of time he did. I got nothing to show for it. I could work eight more years, that's three times him, for 24 total years and still have nothing. Once again, the city's defense is not that we didn't do anything wrong, it's, well, it's past the statute of limitations. City continues to pay mounting legal bills to uphold this defense. Someone should research how much has been spent so far to defend a falsehood. Finally, I stand here today and talk about my healthcare, my coworkers' healthcare, but I want to remind you, behind us employees are families who rely on us and our promised and negotiated benefits. Our families put up with a lot for us to serve as police officers. What's going on here today isn't fair to our families that already pay a heavy price for us to serve the city. Today, this meeting, like all others, opened with a prayer to God, which you all took part in. I remind you of two things God taught us. Treat others the way you want to be treated, and thou shall not steal. If you continue to do nothing, you're supporting this theft by the hands of who you are in charge of. There's no statute of limitations on God's teachings or the Ten Commandments. There's no statute of limitations on doing the right thing. Last meeting, several of you told our citizens, as it relates to crime in our community, if you see something, say something. In other words, you're telling the citizens, always do the right thing, even if it's not the popular thing to do, that's how we move forward. I'm asking you all to do the same thing now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Evelyn McGovern.
Good evening, council, city manager, and the citizens of Saginaw. Again, my name is Evelyn McGovern, and I am the president and co-founder of Women of Colors. It's been in existence for 31 years. Women of Colors is grateful for council's past support in funding our programs. We are here again this evening because Women of Colors is passionate about serving our community. At the last council meeting, the decision to reallocate our programming funds to capital was approved, which gratefully benefited our organization. This evening, I come before you to respectfully request additional capital funding of $75,000 to finalize the closing of our new location. This month is crucial for us to close and facilitate the necessary preparations for us to move this summer. Women of Colors is hopeful that council will approve the additional funds we requested this evening, as time is of the essence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Vicki Hill.
Madam Mayor, councilpeople, thank you for allowing me to speak this afternoon. I am also representing Women of Colors, but a different way. You should have in front of you a flyer about our Women's Wellness Expo. Delta College and Women of Colors has partnered to bring our first Women's Wellness Expo, and I just want to invite everyone here to the Wellness Expo. It's gonna be a great event. It's happening on May the 18th from 9:30 to 3:00 at the Delta Downtown Center. We have lots of speakers that are going to be on the program that day, as well as lots of vendors that will be giving out lots of information on health. So we are looking forward to this event. It's gonna be a great event. It's our very first one, and we are excited about it. We also have our keynote speaker, Mrs. Elizabeth Ann Atkins. She is formerly from Saginaw. Her mom was a former judge here in Saginaw, Marilyn Atkins. Maybe some of you know her, maybe you don't, but we would like to invite all of you to come out. It is absolutely free. On your flyer, you will see a QR code, but if you do not use that QR code, you can simply just walk in the door and register at the door. We just want to get a count of how many people are showing up to our Wellness Expo. As we all know, health is very important, and we're trying to get that information relayed to everyone, that your health is important, and there are things that you need to do to take care of your health, also your mind, body, and soul. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Pam Ross McLean.
Mayor Moore, Mayor Protem, and council members, I am Dr. Pamela Ross McLean, Chief Officer of Culture, Belonging, and Community Building for Delta College. So proud to see our graduates here. I am also a member of the Board for Women of Colors, and so I'm here to speak on their behalf. Our chief started with these officers who are called to serve our community, giving them the very good advice to engage with community. In my role, I also believe that it is important to engage with community. When I chose to engage with Women of Colors, it is because of the mission, vision, and values of this organization who champions diversity, equity, inclusion, service, being responsive to the needs of the community. And so I decided to talk a little bit from the heart with you tonight. A lot of times when we think about who needs help, we think about the neediest of the needy, right? And I stand before you here, a very blessed person with having had opportunities to use my education in Saginaw Public School District, to go on and self-actualize and earn degrees, right? But there was a place in my life when my spirit was broken, when I lost faith in leadership, when I lost faith in this town that gave birth to me. And Evelyn McGovern saw me at Jack's Meat Market, and she saw an opportunity to use her organization's mission to breathe life back into me. She saw that I needed an organization of women who are unified across color barriers, across age barriers, across religious affiliations, who want to serve in this community. And so what I'll say to you is that Women of Colors needs a home because we are being evicted from the Success Academy. The Success Academy is where we send children when they need another chance, where they need...
When I chose to engage with Women of Colors, it is because of the mission, vision, and values of this organization who champions diversity, equity, inclusion, service, being responsive to the needs of the community. And so I decided to talk a little bit from the heart with you tonight. A lot of times when we think about who needs help, we think about the neediest of the needy, right? And I stand before you here a very blessed person with having had opportunities to use my education in Saginaw Public School District, to go on and self-actualize and earn degrees, right? But there was a place in my life when my spirit was broken, when I lost faith in leadership, when I lost faith in this town that gave birth to me. And Evelyn McGovern saw me at Jack's Meat Market, and she saw an opportunity to use her organization's mission to breathe life back into me. She saw that I needed an organization of women who are unified across color barriers, across age barriers, across religious affiliations, who want to serve in this community. And so what I'll say to you is that Women of Colors needs a home because we are being evicted from the Success Academy. The Success Academy is where we chill, send children when they need another chance, where they need somewhere else to go. But the school district is poised right now to need more alternative education. We want to be a part of the solution that is responsive to the needs of our children. We have thirty-one years of uninterrupted service, which means that we are well poised to provide the life skills, the drug and violence prevention, the academic enrichment, the DEI training, the services that our children and our community deserve from grassroots people to lock arms together and build the future that we want to have together. So I would just petition for you, I know you've heard us loud and clear, but Women of Colors is doing great work, and I hope that you will invest ARPA dollars to help us sustain our efforts to make our community the wonderful community it was for me growing up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that takes us to remarks of council.
We will be in tonight with Councilwoman Sylvia.
We have three minutes, young lady.
Well, thank you so very much, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say, good afternoon, good evening to everyone, and I appreciate you all coming to share and listen to your city council members this evening. First of all, I'd like to give some information to you all. There's going to be a health, health formation, smooth jazz R&B in regards to, the money will be going to the Sickle Cell Anemia Foundation in Saginaw, and that's at the Horizon, May twelfth at five P.M. So if you can get out, that would be so lovely, we'd appreciate it. I'd like to say that we had a lot of controversy in regards to the Fifth and Sixth Street, changing that over. I myself met with Mr. Phil Kawat and his team on this past Friday. It was a very, very good meeting. And we're going to be having a town hall meeting here the ninth at four-thirty, right here at City Hall. So all concerned citizens, anyone that want to have, you know, that information back and forth, so it is question and answer. That would be one of the times that you will be able to do that. Also, out of that meeting, we decided that we would bring the meeting to the citizens where they live. So we're in the process of having another meeting for the citizens in the area of the Fifth and Sixth Avenue. So you will be getting information later. It was almost ready, with a couple of little things need to be worked out. So, you know, we want to make sure, and Mr. Phil and his team want to make sure, that those doors are open to the citizens to have the question answered back and forth in regard to any major decisions that we're going to be making or voting on in regards to the city of Saginaw. I also went to the ribbon cutting for the Children's Zoo. It was so phenomenal. It was awesome. It was awesome. You missed something real good. You may see it on the Saginaw page. Also, I went to the graduation for the Fire Department, the new graduates. It was also awesome to see those young people wanting to give back to their city, and maybe even move from this area. We hope not, but to go wherever, you know, they feel comfortable. And also, congratulation again to the new Saginaw Police Department. Thank you very much. And that's it for me today.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Please excuse my tardiness tonight. I would like to say happy Cinco de Mayo to everyone, and I hope they had a wonderful and safe weekend. I'd also like to say thank you to our speakers tonight. Women of Colors, of course, champions for our city. Appreciate you being here tonight again. I would like to say that if Manager Morales, if we can set up a time to have a conversation about the two officers that came and spoke, I would like to talk about that. Outside of that, thank you to our new officers, and I say thank you because your service is welcome and needed. We appreciate you, and welcome to the party.
He's a police officer as well. Next, we have Councilman Love.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank the citizens for coming out to the city council meeting today. Good luck on your careers as officers. You guys even look like rookies, unless you haven't consumed any donuts yet. Keep up the good work. I'm sure you'll find some at the local seven-eleven. I'd like to thank the people here for the mental health. There's a lot of things that go on in the city of Saginaw, and a lot of it have to do with poverty in the city of Saginaw. Fifty-two percent of the children in the city of Saginaw live in poverty. Fifteen percent of seniors in the city of Saginaw live in poverty. Fifty-two percent of females in the city of Saginaw have never been married, and forty-seven percent of the males have never been married. Poor children also experience disproportionate amount of neglect and social problems because of poverty. They often have lower self-esteem and greater incidence of mental health problems. So we have some problems in the city of Saginaw that we really going to have to address if we want the city of Saginaw to be a better place for all citizens to leave here. I personally have been involved in the Big Brothers and Sisters program for thirty-something years, still involved in on the board of directors of Big Brothers and Sisters, and whenever I have the opportunity to mentor a kid, the little brothers that I have, none of them have got into any major trouble in the city of Saginaw, and they all have gone on to go to college. One of them is a truck driver in the city of Saginaw, and they all doing good things. So it beholds us to realize that if we got forty, fifty-two percent of the women never been married, and forty-seven percent of the men, then there's going to be a lot of children here without somebody to mentor them. So I always ask the citizens to please get involved in a child's life if you want to make the city a better place. It don't take a lot, just like the chief said, go out and talk to the children, get engaged, it broadens their scope and give them hope. And one thing we know about people that don't have no hope, they will definitely start using some dope. Whenever you have pain, you're going to have to get something to relieve that pain. A lot of kids use alcohol and drugs to relieve that pain. So if we want the city of Saginaw to be a better place, we have to engage our children who come from single-parent homes. So at least once a month, I'd say something about it because I know that it'd help our city out a lot. So please, if you want to see Saginaw a better place, get involved in mentoring, or engage the children in your neighborhood. I had an opportunity to engage one of my neighbors. He went on to be a, going to Michigan Youth Challenge Academy, and out of twenty-five years, he's the first African-American to be over the unit as a student, and now he's going to school to be a skilled trades, tradesman, he want to be a pipefitter, he want to be a welder. So I'm telling you, it don't take a lot, but just get engaged with the kids, and I guarantee you can change the city of Saginaw just by engaging a child. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Oster.
Thanks, Mayor. Welcome, everybody, and everybody watching from home, and to everybody in the chamber. I know it's a full house in here. We are doing some HVAC work, so I know it's a little warm, so thanks for, thanks for putting up with that with us tonight. Just to go down the list of some of our public speakers, thanks for coming out tonight and speaking to us. Mr. Isaac, I do want to address you specifically. We heard you, and I understand, I could hear what you were saying, but also too, I also want to just ask you to contact the Saginaw School Board. They actually met tonight. You can go to their website and express your concerns to them. Please go sign up for their input as well, and make sure that your voice is heard. So thanks for coming out. And then also too, Women of Color, thanks for coming out tonight and your presentations. Like Councilman said, it's, and my colleagues here are saying it's a lot of work that you do in the city, and it's fantastic. So thank you for coming out and expressing your thoughts with us again tonight. And also to my colleague, Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia, thanks for bringing up the graduation and the zoo. I had planned to make these events, but there's a lot going on with my day job at work, so I was not able to attend, but I think, I saw that you did, and thanks for posting that on Facebook. It was good to see that. So congrats to our graduates. Also too, I want to concur with my colleague, Councilman Williams. I too would like a little bit more information on our officers that have came and spoke to us tonight. So, Mr. Manager, if we could get more information on that, I would really enjoy to team up with Councilman Williams on that. And just a few things that have been going on in the city. Cinco de Mayo Parade and celebrations were over the weekend. With some of my colleagues, we were on the council float. We actually have a banner on the front of the truck now, but thanks to Mike's wrecker, who once gracefully put us on the back of his truck, but we do have a banner on the front now, so people know that it is the city council coming. But that was a lot of fun with you all. A lot of candy was thrown to the kids, and it was a great day, just great, I love seeing the kids in the parades. That's the number one thing, and they're all asking for candy, so. There was an event that people, some people heard about this weekend. It was a great event put on by a friend of mine, Laura Swanton. It was called the Midwest Broken Mirror. It was held here at the Saginaw Club, but it was, if you didn't have a chance to see it or even see it on Facebook, please just try to find out what she is doing. It was a bunch of photographs and videos, but it's about body image and how culture has shaped us, our race has shaped us, our gender identity, trauma, physical and mental abilities, and how we feel about ourselves. So it was really interesting to, there, and Mayor Moore, she did stop by as well, so it was nice to see her there. But I was able to read their stories and self-identify on things that we all go through as we grow up. So thanks, Laura, for putting that on and giving some awareness to that. Also coming up too, on May eleventh, is the United States Postal Service Food Drive, so you're probably getting bags, your postal people are probably leaving them, so that food drive will be taking place. Just put it on the front porch. They will do the rest and get that to local food banks, and I am done.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Garcia.
Good afternoon, concerned citizens of the community. Just want to say thank you for all our speakers that came out, and it's nice to see a full house, and also the support of the officers and their families. Welcome to the city of Saginaw's Police Department. Also, I want to say congratulations to Bayside, Jim, the director and his group of young people here. I actually have known them for a long time, and I'm actually on their advisory board. So we meet once a month, and I always get to go eat some good food, so it's always a good time and get to try something different. But we will be hosting an open house next month, and you can see it on their Facebook page as well, so the council's invited to that, Tuesday, June eighteenth, from three to seven, late refreshments. I don't know if you guys probably know the building and didn't realize, because I thought it was like a private club or something. It's right across from the seven-eleven, the State Street over there, and the address for it is twenty-seven hundred West Genesee Avenue, Saginaw, Michigan 402. They do a lot of great things. They go out in the community and stuff, so I've been going there, like I said, for a long time. I taught nutrition classes there as well, and Jim's great, and Tracy and Brian and all them, the staff there, they're very welcoming, and it'd be great if you guys can come in and see what they're doing, all the great things. I want to say it's kind of Saginaw's best hidden secret, you know? So if you get a chance, go out there and check that out. Also, next month, the city of Saginaw, they're doing a Community Resource Fair, Tuesday, June eighteenth, from twelve to two P.M. at Bliss Park. And I know I went last year to it, and it was a really great event that they had out there, and there's going to be a lot of different resources out there, Michigan Works, Can Council, just to name some of them, the NAB, Saginaw CAC, Covenant Healthcare, the Saginaw Y, and plenty more. But they do have like a lot of giveaways, a lot of different swag, and just to get familiar with some of the places in the city of Saginaw and around the surrounding area to take a look at that. And I just want to say, yes, happy Cinco de Mayo. It was a great event that my cousin put on, Larry O'Darty, from Henta Magazine, and also the Union Civico Mexicana. I got to actually touch the Tano Star. I had just came back from San Antonio, that's why I wasn't here last council meeting, but I grew up listening to her music, and it was an awesome event. The weather was great. And then also, Miguel, Kate Onda, I didn't get to make it the second day, but I was there in spirit, and I seen all the great pictures and stuff. So, I mean, they're really trying to do a lot down there with SVRC Marketplace. And also to my colleagues that helped with the candy and that, helped getting that together, Mike's wrecker, and he was great helping with getting the lead for the Cinco de Mayo Parade, and there was a lot of happy kids, and I actually threw out healthy snacks, so I hope they liked them. They didn't throw them away, but yeah. So thank you, and happy Mother's Day to all you mothers and grandmas out there that have been doing a great job.
Next, we have Councilman Flores.
Hello, Saginaw. Yeah, happy Cinco de Mayo to everybody. Sorry I wasn't able to be at the parade. I was doing a Unions For All event in Flint. That was the only time that I wasn't able to show up to the parade, but I'm sure everybody had a great time, or it went really well. Congratulations to the new officers. Thank you so much for your service. You are desperately needed, and I hope that you have a great journey here and a great career here in the city of Saginaw. Just a quick shout out to Councilman Copeland. He's in London with his students, so safe travels to him. I think it's midnight there right now, so he's probably maybe sleeping. If, if anybody's looking for anything to do this weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, Bethlehem Lutheran School is doing a play. It's called Matilda the Musical. It's a raw duel, piece of fiction. My son's going to be in it. It's his first play. He's playing a Russian and a plumber. So I don't know how I, I'm not sure how I feel about that. But tickets are available. Please call nine-eight-nine-seven-five-five-eleven-forty-four if you're looking to participate in that. And then outside of that, I don't have too much. If anybody has any information on the murder of Keishon Banks, Kwan Lee, Quay Smithers, Mario Bulger, Pamela Whitson, Ryan Clemmons, Roy Whitson III, Cortez Hampton, Mazzy Reddison, Jonathan Lamar Van, Ronald Pacheco, Delance Stephens, Tezi Thomas, and Tyrone Kennedy. I know some of these folks, there has been arrests made, but moving forward with any type of prosecution, folks still need additional people to step up. If they have information, please call one-eight-hundred-four-two-two-five-two-four-five, and that's it for me.
Next, we have Mayor Pro-Tim Bench.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening to everyone. Thank you all for being here. It was really nice to meet all of you from the Bayside, and Mr. Nesbit over there. I used to work at the seven-eleven across the street from you guys, so many of you were regulars of mine over at the seven-eleven, and some of our highlights of our day, getting to see you over there. But it's a nice organization that does wonderful things for the community, and we appreciate that you're over there. To our new recruits or to our new officers, welcome. You guys are all very impressive, and we're really fortunate to get such talented people out of our program over at Delta. But welcome, and thank you for your willingness to serve our city. I too want to say happy Cinco de Mayo. I know everybody's already said it, but I do want to really just thank and congratulate Larry O'Darty and just everyone who put on the festival and the parade. I really want to thank my council members and my colleagues, everybody who showed up, and I think almost everybody who wasn't there helped buy candy or dropped candy off or helped participate and supported us in that way too, so. And I just really want to congratulate Kionda. We have a really wonderful venue with SVRC Marketplace, so to see these festivals occur annually and, you know, become a regular event, especially using that venue, it's a wonderful thing to see happening in our downtown. And I'm really looking forward to hearing about the Memorial Cup. I think it's right around the corner, and we're getting excited, and we've got a lot of really wonderful stuff happening here in Saginaw, and it's, there's going to be so much, I think it's going to be hard to get to it all, so those are good problems to have. And I just wanted to add, piggybacking off of my colleague, Oz Tash, Mr. Oz Tash over there, Mr. Campo, specifically, five-fifty Millard on the fifteenth of May is, at five-thirty is the next school board action meeting, and they would welcome you. I think they have two points during their meeting where you can sign up for comment, like before they take action, and then after to maybe weigh in on whatever they've done. But please take your concerns and make your voice heard over there. I know that they are always, you know, open to the public and looking for people to come in and give them feedback about how they can serve their community and the students better. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, best is always last. Jimmy Graham. Let me say this. Let me start off. Saturday, if you are not busy, it's cleanup to meet up. We got company coming. We need to clean our house up. We're getting ready to start the activity on the eleventh at nine in the morning, at eight in the morning, nine or eight, don't matter. If you come at eight, you can sit, play, and talk to me, and we will be leaving out at nine. Then we will also be repeating it again on Friday for the downtown area. If you are not busy, I know it's Mother's Day weekend, please come and help us. What are we cleaning up for? The Memorial Cup. We got company coming. Not little company, a lot of company. So for the next, everybody says the twenty-fourth, I said by the week of the nineteenth, this city is going to be all fire. I said by the week of the 19th, this city is going to be all fire. And I don't mean that physically, I mean that. Somebody, I want nobody setting on no fire, okay? But there's going to be so much to do. And I really want the citizens, the north, the east, the west, the south, everybody to come and join in. This is our city and we need to display it. Mental health, you know my hat talks. Anything I could ever do to help, to encourage, please let me know. It is a good thing when you go and you say, "I'm tired, I'm not going to go today." I'm so proud of the city council members because I was tired Saturday, so I took a break. I'll be honest, I took a break. And they still did the Cinco de Mayo and I'm so proud of them. And I heard that they did a fabulous job. See, it's good when you can go away and you know that you still got business being handled. I cannot be everything for everybody. I want to be, but realistically, I can't. Remember what I said some, some three years ago? Let me repeat it. It's a new season, it's a new day. Fresh anointing has come our way. The spirit of power and prosperity, it's a new season. Saginaw, we going to walk into the glory because Saginaw is now going to be recognized throughout the United States, starting May the 24th. Be there or be square. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
That takes us to reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager.
First I would ask that the, did the officers be released?
I didn't hear what you said.
Can they go?
You know what? The only person I know that can clear room in less than two minutes when it's his time. For anybody that would like to leave, and I know it's hot in here, please do. New officers, thank you so much. We'll be in touch. Family, thank you so much for loaning us your children. I told you all he can empty out a room. Lord, he done emptied the whole room out. See you guys later.
Thanks for coming.
Bye.
Mr. Manager, a whole side of the room is. A whole side of the room has left. Yes, staff in the other room, don't we? We probably should bring them over so we can look, so we can.
Balance it out. Be on the groom's side.
Right. Feel like we're completely unpopular if we don't bring the staff in.
Oh, we had a crowd.
I thought they were all here for the budget presentation.
It was really good to see so many mental health people here today. Norm is one person, okay?
Okay, so now we'll move on. And just a reminder that the Police Awards and Memorial Ceremony is next Wednesday, the 15th, at 11:00 AM at the Police Department Lobby.
What time, sir?
It's at 11:00 AM on the 15th, next Wednesday.
They coming in.
And as the mayor mentioned, the Team Up to Cleanup today, it's the last day to volunteer for the cleanup. The link is on our homepage and maybe we'll extend that a little bit if we need to. The Saginaw Scenic Division is ready for another successful Neighborhood Recognition Award Program for 2024. The city will begin accepting nominations on Friday, May 10th. The Neighborhood Recognition Awards are intended to thank those residents and business owners who take exceptional care of their properties. Residents, neighborhood groups and City of Saginaw employees can nominate local homes and businesses for exceptional yard work and landscaping improvements. This is the seventh year of the program and there will be one award from each neighborhood quadrant for June, July and August and then one grand prize winner at the end of the contest. We have received questions about the Native American land acknowledgement on a Jibway Island, so that is in the process of being repaired. The company that manufactured that is going to bolt those items onto the marker now. They were glued with industrial adhesive. We don't think that there was vandalism there, as some people have said. We think that they fell off because of, the adhesive failed. If you remember the time that that was put out, it was quite cold and rainy, so we think that was just the issue there. None of the items were really damaged, so it doesn't look like it was vandalism issue. And we discussed this at the City County School Liaison Committee meeting last week, but we are working on the Hot Time Summer Youth Activity Guide again this year in cooperation with the other two groups in the committee. So if you're involved in an organization that will have summer youth activities, please contact the city manager's office to have that added on there. We've contacted all of the organizations that had activities listed last year and they're still getting back to us, but if you know of some new ones that we can add, please let us know. And we will have an ARPA review upcoming. We're hoping to have it at the next meeting, but we'll, I'll check in with the consultants and staff to make sure we're ready to do that. It will be on the next meeting or the first meeting in June, but we'll send an email to update you to let you know. I'm planning on the next meeting though. And finally, the last two items, we have two presentations. Council did receive the budget document and we have the budget presentation this evening on the agenda. And as I say each year, the budget process is far longer than most people realize. They start working on it in December of the previous year and they complete it in April. It's something that's worked on by every division and every department. You'll see when Ms. Bland does her presentation, this is, I think, the largest budget that we've ever had in the city. A lot of that's due to grand dollars that we have. But I want to thank Yolanda and her staff for all the hard work that they do on that as well as all the department heads and division heads prepare their budgets as well. So it takes a lot of teamwork to get this done and we're glad to have it completed. And you're also going to hear, as some council members mentioned, some of the projects surrounding the Memorial Cup that's coming up in a few weeks. So first presentation we have is the Memorial Cup, I believe. So Cassie is going to start out with that and we have some guests here as well.
Hello, council members, city managers, city staff, Mayor Moore. I am here today with really my friends, Kayla Pionk and Jimmy Green. At this point, we've been working together pretty closely for the last year or so and meeting pretty regularly, so I think we can call each other friends. Yeah. So I'm going to start off and go through some of the city side, kind of the partnerships and programs that we've ran in conjunction with the Memorial Cup as well as some events and some things that will still be up and coming. And then Kayla and Jimmy will take it over and talk about the Memorial Cup specifically. Okay, one of the large projects that you all, a lot of these projects you may be familiar with, but feel free to ask me questions if you want to have any other detail. And also a disclaimer that I'm only really talking about city-specific projects and events, there is a ton more going on during Memorial Cup. So, and a lot more other activities, even projects happening that the city really wasn't involved with, so just a disclaimer. So the Henry Marsh Bridge and Symphony Lane project was something that was dreamed up by the CVB, but they, with the Memorial Cup, this actually kind of brought it to a head and they decided to bring it forward at this point. We worked very closely with the CVB as well to help make sure that a lot of the projects that they were wanting to make happen could happen because some of it was on city land, it was working with MDOT, it's working with a lot of infrastructure. So the city ended up coming in as a partner. We were also able to get a $1 million allocation from the Michigan Strategic Fund to help with this mural, the Symphony Lane reconstruction. Symphony Lane is right next to the overpass of 675 across the street from the Dow. That road was completely redesigned so that it can be a food truck alley. I just took a picture the other day, that bottom one was last week. They're still in there doing work, so it's not complete. It still needs a lot of the pretty stuff to go in. Some of the light poles are in, they're going to have some other landscaping and things and then I believe that they're planning to have like the, what do they call, like a sky bridge with the lights going across. The ribbon cutting also is coming up on May 21st at 5:30 over there. In addition to the mural and Symphony Lane, there's going to be a statue that will be revealed at the mural, at the ribbon cutting. And then you guys have also seen the mural that was put up on the Dow Event Center parking garage. The Riverfront Gateway was a project that actually started at the Riverfront Commission, but once again, when the Memorial Cup came around, there was just, we were kind of looking for things that were planned, that we could do, that would help to elevate this event to the next level and just bring some other long-lasting things as a part of the Memorial Cup coming to Saginaw and to really leave the legacy that this isn't just going to be a one-time event, we're having long-lasting effects and benefits. So this was a partnership between the Riverfront Commission and then primarily the City of Saginaw through you all, you allocated ARPA dollars to make so that this project would get done. So here was the initial plan and then I do have some photos from last week. So we do have some skysails up, we, or sails, tables and benches are in there. The gating is all new. They have a couple light poles. They will be adding more, they'll be adding landscaping and some other elements to really dress this up, but it is looking good. If you guys, I wish I had a before picture to compare it to, but even just being cleaned out like this, I was down there on a beautiful day and it was just amazing. And right in the riverfront, right by our marketplace, it's a great location. Hoyt Park is under construction right now. Hoyt Park did a huge fundraising campaign for themselves. You guys also awarded some ARPA dollars to help with their project as well as the city has agreed to refinish Hoyt Park, or Hoyt Drive, the Lower Hoyt Drive as a part of this project as well, to again, just help elevate it. And this was also one of the projects that I believe the Saginaw Spirit, Dick Garber helped fund as well as part of a legacy project for the Memorial Cup. They're also going to be having tons of events at Hoyt Park during the Memorial Cup. They're going to have USA versus Canada, different types of games, girls and boys, kids and adults, so anybody would be welcome to be there. It's just going to be a fun time down at Hoyt Park. I don't think I really need to touch on Team Up to Cleanup anymore. Please come out on this Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00 and next Friday from 9:00 to 1:00 as well. Yeah, we're really going to be focusing Saturday is pretty much a normal cleanup all throughout the city and then that Friday will really be hitting the business corridors in our riverfront area. We do have quite a few things committed outside of, you know, just helping with the cleanup things. We have already, city staff has done quite a bit of different cleanup work around the area. We were meeting decently, regularly, early on to tackle problem buildings, problem areas, make sure that we get different things cleaned up, different properties taken care of. I know engineering was able to mill and resurface some roads in this area that just had seen better days. So we, really, it's been a great partnership this entire route and yeah, it's, it's been really great to see what the city can do when we all come together. During the event, I have some things listed and some of the things that you guys are approving today actually are for the Memorial Cup in the consent agenda. This was a huge partnership between the Saginaw DDA, Saginaw Spirit and Memorial Cup and then the city, I guess, and Stars. So Saginaw DDA funded 100% of this riverfront loop that will be running at 15-minute intervals stop the entire time during the Memorial Cup. It's going to run from 11:00 AM to 2:30 AM. So we are going to have people be able to get around from lunchtime until after the bars. And they're also in concert with that, running additional river, or later routes for all of their routes. And then they're also waiving all of the fees that, for the entire two weeks, or 10 days, for anybody who rides, whether you're a visitor, whether you're a resident, whether you're a frequent rider or not, there will be no fees that, that entire time during Memorial Cup. And I do have a bunch of flyers for all of these things. I probably should have put together a packet for you guys. I'd be happy to do that. Oh, and that's the bus. Jimmy sent me a picture of the bus. This is the actual bus that will be going around for the riverfront loop. Very cool. The Hair Hunt, and I actually didn't update this, we now have 21 bunnies, 15 in the city and six out county. So the Hair Hunt was an idea that was dreamed up years ago, but we brought it back for the Memorial Cup. Essentially, we're going to be taking the bunnies that are out on the courthouse lawn, scattering them throughout the city and the county at our, our entertainment sites, our cultural sites, a lot of parks, different areas like that, kind of based on sponsorships, but really based on what the assets of the community are and how we're going to show those off. So we're looking at educating the people who live here on what our assets are as well as bringing another thing to pull people around the area while they are here visiting. We're placing them in some common areas like Haythco Park has one, the Saginaw Zoo has one. We're actually putting one on the courthouse lawn to kind of do a connection thing. So they're going to be out in the public where hopefully people will just stumble upon them and then be able to go on this hunt. And we do have some really big prizes. We've had wonderful sponsorships through this. All of those bunnies are brand-new bunnies that were out this year. And so we will have about $10,000 in prizes up for grabs. We're going to have about 10 daily drawings during the Memorial Cup for a little come in and get, we'll have a whole array of t-shirts, hats, tickets to the zoo, gift cards to local restaurants, those types of things you can do while you're in town. And then after folks are gone, we'll have larger drawings for bigger ticket items like Spirit tickets, come back and stay at Bavarian Inn Hotel and have free water park passes and then have some gift cards in there. And we have golf, we have certificates for different golf resorts, or golf clubs? I don't golf. Golf places around the county. Lots of things to win. It's going to be really fun, so I hope that you all can participate in some way. We will have a map. It's all on the city's website. If you want to go to saginaw-mi.com/hairhunt, all the information is on there. We're still uploading more information into it, but that's going to be the main site for it. We also actually partnered with Saginaw Future who put together a digital mapping system and one of the layers is the Hair Hunt. So everybody who is being directed to that mapping system will also have the opportunity to look at the Hair Hunt and we're linking that directly to the website to again, all tie everything back together. Shop Sensational is an event that is being hosted by SEDC, the CMU RC and the SVRC Marketplace. This will be down, I have pictures right here of the last Small Business Expo because it's going to be sort of similar to that. Down in the marketplace, they're going to have vendors all over the place, local vendors and, and food, food suppliers as well. Lastly, I wanted to point out this project that I'm sure you all have heard about. There were a lot of rumblings around last week, but this is going to be quite a feat and quite a fun thing to actually watch. There, there was a delay with the artists coming over, I've heard, so it's going to be a couple more weeks, so they may actually be painting during the Memorial Cup, which is kind of cool, but just be, keep a lookout because over the next month, this murals start coming to life more than just the color blocks. Actually, lastly, I wanted to throw in because I forgot and I didn't want to not mention it. One other event that the city is involved in, normally we do a Saginaw Soup Entrepreneurial Pitch Competition. We rebranded that for the Memorial Cup. We are doing Pitch at the Cup and we have a student and an adult category, so we will have five adults and five students pitching. I would love to have anybody come to this if you would like to. Your own councilman Balls is actually going to be a judge, so you can come and watch him ask questions to some kids pitching their business ideas. And then that's it for me, so I'm going to pass it over to you guys.
First I want to start by thanking each and every one of you at the table today. It wouldn't be possible without your support and the partnership that we've created with the city and the Dow Event Center as well as the Saginaw Spirit. In the next week or so, you will see the various signage going up in and around the city, over across streets, on our light poles, as well as some generous members who have given us their, their land to post some giant signs to welcome our visitors as they're crossing the gateways and coming into the Dow Event Center and the City of Saginaw. crossing the gateways and coming into the Dow Event Center and the City of Saginaw. We have various events that are going on, on the central campus that we've created, and each one of you in front, I think it was Councilmember Garcia pointed out, looks like a, a, placemat. What we've done is you have the very first copies of what is currently in production for 20,000 copies of our folded up event map. It will be a front and back, it folds into an index card shape that people will be able to carry in their purse, carry in their back pocket on their person, and keep it close with them. Uh, various QR codes are on here, uh, Go Grates for people to find other events in and around our event, as well as the Stars transportation loops, uh, the Frankenmuth Hotel Shuttle, the Saginaw Hotel Shuttles, and then our day-to-day events as well. Um, we're so fortunate to be hosting what we have created and what Mr. Goslin feels is going to be the best Memorial Cup to date, um, the fourth time in the U.S. And I, I think we're really setting a precedent as our visitors from Amuski, the next hosts are coming in to take notes. And then we have a couple other future cities for 2026 that are looking to bid, hearing wonderful things that we're doing here in the city, again, coming to take notes, uh, to hopefully add to their bid and create something memorable like we have here. One event that we're extremely proud of, and I hope everybody takes note, is Sunday, May 26th. This is a family faith-focused day. We will start the day at noon with an ice cream social, uh, that is being brought to us by Michigan Sugar, where Michigan Cream and Sugar has donated 2,000 pre-scooped ice cream cups, and we will be distributing those to anybody who comes for absolutely free. This will run until 1:00 PM, which will then run in conjunction with our Faith Unity Day. And Jimmy can even speak more to that, but currently we have 15 local churches that are involved in this unity event. Uh, this will not be a traditional service, it will not be marked as a, as a service at all, but our, our faith leaders have looked to it as a, a time to celebrate God, a time to celebrate each person's walks of faith, and to celebrate the unity and, uh, the melting pot, which we call home. So we're really fortunate to that. Um, also, please take note of May 23rd, uh, which is that Thursday, that is the arrival of the cup. We will be making a parade down 75 to 675 into Commerce Tower, where we will pick up a formal parade, where Saginaw United High School Band will be present, Saginaw Valley High School Band will be present, our Boy Scouts representing giant flags for the U.S. and Canada, uh, and several military vehicles, which will make its way into the Jolt Event Park, uh, our special dignitaries, and please, uh, you are all welcome to attend. Formal invites will be sent out, as well as emails were sent, but, um, we'd all love you at the table, so to speak, to really ring in the celebration and commemorate this experience. Uh, the Saginaw Bay Symphony Orchestra will bring 60 pieces, um, present on our 60 by 40 stage to perform both national anthems, as well as America the Beautiful, uh, accompanied with Todd Michael Hall from The Voice. So this is truly a celebration to remember and again, be a part of as, um, we may never see this in our lifetime again. And then just as I reiterated, the arrival of the cup, and my email is on this slide here. If you have not already RSVP'd for the ceremony or the dinner, I encourage you to do so by sending me an email. I know I've heard from a few of you already, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. Um, we hope to have everybody else on board to come and welcome our visitors and the athletes that have competed so hard, uh, to compete for one of the hardest trophies in sports history. Anything I'm forgetting, Jimmy?
This is the shortest time you've ever heard me speak. I just wanted to thank you, really, seriously. This has been the greatest endeavor. I, I got here in 1980 in Saginaw, and I've never seen, uh, this region, this county, the city come together like it has now, and I just want to thank each and every single one of you. Uh, the city's been phenomenal. Uh, Jim, hats off to you and your team, just amazing. Stars, just so you know, and I got a fellow board member back here will tell you, took a hit, financial hit, preparing, uh, these Stars buses for these routes. I would encourage you to talk to business owners in and around Saginaw to extend their hours. Uh, there's nothing worse than having buses prepared to send people to restaurants or bars that are closed. Again, Stars typically stop service at 10 o'clock, we're talking 2:30 AM. So, and our games now begin at 7:30, so we probably won't be done until 10 or 10:30. So it'd be nice to see a, a revive Saginaw and these buses running up and down. I would also encourage you to park, uh, somewhere other than the arena area. Uh, I imagine with, uh, thousands of Canadians coming over driving, they may not have, uh, the appropriate parking logistics that we do. That's why the bus is running in and around, so you could park on Hamilton at that parking lot over there, uh, anywhere you want to. These buses will be running 10 to 15-minute intervals, so if you don't want to get caught up in traffic jams, park, ride a bus. Uh, it'll be nice. I plan to ride from McCarthy, from McCartyan Bay all the way down to the arena, so I'm, I'm going to practice what I preach. But again, just thank you so much for everything you've done, and I think you're going to be really proud of you and us. And I always say this, Spokane, do you remember the Sesame Street, which doesn't belong here? Spokane, Portland, Seattle, Saginaw. That's powerful. Thank you.
Thank you.
And lastly, just for all of our, our business owners, uh, in Old Town and Uptown, we have created these, uh, posters that can go on all the window fronts, the brick and mortars, inside the restaurants, on any of the message boards they have. I will leave some with Cassie, but we'll continue to provide them as businesses would like them, welcoming our visitors and just showing that patriotism for the event itself. So thank you again, everybody.
Do you have any questions?
Yes, I got a question.
Cassidy Boss, I'm gonna get you.
Cassidy, when is this Saginaw Soup?
May 30th at 5:30.
He must have knocked out the end, buddy.
Councilwoman Sylvia.
Yes, thank you very much. I don't know if I missed it, the ribbon cutting on the 21st at 5:30, exactly where is that?
Um, I believe we'll just meet at the Dow.
We're meeting first at Symphony Lane.
We'll meet right there at the other end.
So it's the ribbon cutting for.
Across the street.
Yeah, it's for Symphony Lane, right next to the EZ Park Parking.
Where all McDonald's used to be.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And then I believe it's followed by the dedication of the mural, followed by the unveiling of the statue.
No question, just, uh, comment, I just want to say thank you to everyone, um, that's involved, because like you mentioned, this is, we, something we probably won't see in our lifetimes again, and for Saginaw to be a part of this, this is truly special. Um, so much to the point to, um, I've witnessed, uh, Brother Jimmy giving many presentations in regards to the Memorial Cup, and to hear certain people say, "I'm tired of hearing about the Memorial, Memorial Cup," and then turn around and now are excited about it coming. Um, the marketing has been great, the spread of the word, everything, this is fantastic for the city. So I would encourage, uh, Mr. Garber and anyone else, if they want to purchase a basketball team, a basketball team, to keep this going, that would be wonderful. That, that would be wonderful.
We saving that for the Shaheens.
Yeah, I just, uh, quick, quick comment is, uh, thank you again, like Councilman Williams is saying, I'm really excited for this and I'm looking forward to it. I live right, right down by, um, St. Mary's Hospital, so I probably will walk and maybe catch a, and catch a bus down there, but, um, no, super excited, thanks for everything that you've done. This is really, hats off to our city, and this is fantastic that this is coming. Uh, I do want to comment on the Riverfront Sail Park. There's been a lot of, uh, there's been a few people on social media that have found it, and they've got some pretty good presence on social media, and they've commented on how wonderful this is, and look at the place that we can hang out. Uh, there was one question, and I, it might be something that we're still working on, they were asking about trash cans. So if, if my question, if I have a question, it's like, give more trash cans that's possible down there, but no, thank you for everything, it looks fantastic.
I just have a comment too. Um, a couple weeks ago, I, um, presented at the Saginaw Chapter Lead, and I had brought up about the Memorial, Memorial Cup, and one of the guys, after he came and thanked me and said, "I was going to talk about it, I'm glad you brought it up," but anything for the city, and so I invited some of the people from, they, they were from like Detroit, Lansing area, so one of the young ladies said she's going to come back to do for the Memorial Cup. So I thought that was pretty cool, because we talked about it and stuff, and, you know, people are getting excited, because it's not just for us, it's for everybody to come and enjoy.
I will say this, we, we made special accommodations. We actually have a Latino corner in Morley Plaza. Uh, we, we wanted, and this was really very personal for us to make sure that the Memorial Cup was incredibly inclusive, that came right from the top, but it fed us anyway. So I think you'll see in the Memorial Cup, and by the way, you, you have tickets to the Memorial Cup, just like Women of Colors does, Big Brothers, Big Sisters. We took care of 46 nonprofits to come to the Memorial Cup. They don't have the budgets to be able to do that, I think you've heard them talk about that. Forty-six of our city's nonprofits will be participating, not just in the free stuff, but actually coming inside and enjoying the Memorial Cup, so, uh, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Thank you, uh, to the Memorial Cup team, and now we have Yolanda Bland.
I can make the most of your approval.
Well, good evening. Good evening to you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, and City Manager Morales. Um, tonight, I would like to give you a quick overview of the FY25 budget, as well as review with you the budget schedule. Um, with me tonight, I have Tom, Thomas Rains, he's now the Deputy Director of OMB, and John Baker, who is our Budget Analyst.
Technical difficulties?
I did not turn it off. I'm not sure what's going on. Okay, moving in the right direction. So copies of the proposed budget is, uh, will be available as of tomorrow in the City Clerk's Office at 1315 South Washington Avenue, and we will also have copies on the city's website. Our schedule for the budget is, again, tonight, we're doing, um, a quick overview with your, uh, with the proposed budget being presented to you back on April 29th, and then you received the present, long presentation, um, last week on May 3rd. Uh, we will be having a public hearing on May 20th, and we're hoping for adoption on May 20th as well. Um, if anyone has any questions, they can email me or call me directly at 989-759-1784, or ybland@saginaw-mi.com. So, um, similar to previous years, this budget has been presented to you reflecting our commitment to quality services to our citizens while preserving our organization's long-term, uh, financial viability. The FY25 20, or excuse me, FY20, uh, 2025 budget is 233.92 million, which is the largest budget I've done here, and I've been here almost 18 years, so it's pretty large. Um, this represents a 55.69 million dollar increase, or about 32% from the previous 24 budget. The general fund budget is approximately 44.55 million. This is an increase of 4.29 million, or roughly 11% from the previous fiscal year. Um, non-general fund budgets account for approximately, uh, it looks like 81% of the total budget. So the largest increases you're going to realize, number one, your American Rescue Plan Act will be 37.5 million dollars. As, uh, City Council approved the allocation of, of ARPA funds, um, the budget reflects that, so this actually looks like an increase of 14.45 million. New in the fiscal year 25 budget is the State of Michigan Saginaw Medical Facility Fund. During the current year, the city received the State of Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Development Opportunity Grant in an amount of 30.3 million dollars, and we've, you know, done the budget adjustment for it. And so this, uh, new fund will account for the activities that will occur with the development of a medical facility in the City of Saginaw. And for fiscal year 25, it will be about 12 million dollars that we're budgeting. The Water and Op, uh, Water and Sewer, Water Operation and Maintenance Fund is about 11.89 million dollars higher than the previous year. Um, the Department of Water and Wastewater Services continues to budget for the elevated storage tank project, the lead and copper galvanizing line replacement project, and the Birch Run Parallel Water Manes Project. A portion of these expenditures will be offset by federal and state grants. The sewer operation and maintenance funds will increase roughly 19% or 6.11 million, and this increase is directly related to the river crossing project and the project at Hancock CSO Basin repairs at 100 North Hamilton. So the fiscal year 25 budget also reflects changes in salaries of all employees. We had a contract renewal back in fiscal year 23. This year will be 2% increase for fiscal year 25. The city will also experience an increase in several of the internal service funds, such as Technical Services IS, because the city's moving towards a cloud-based platform. The motor pool operations, as the cost of motor vehicle supplies and motor vehicle repairs continues to increase, and we're seeing an increase in the self-insurance fund for over $400,000 due to increase in the insurance rates nationwide. So what I've provided to you is also a historical review of the budgets. As you can see, back in fiscal year 24, the general fund budget was 40.26 million. For fiscal year 25, it will be 44.56 million. Citywide, the budget was 178.23 million, and for fiscal year 25, it's going to be 233.92 We have challenges, and we've talked about it in the beginning of your, the budget document. Um, one of the challenges that we continue to face is in water sewer with the lead and copper galvanizing line replacement. For fiscal year 25, we continue to address the funding on both, uh, water and sewer operations for the replacement of lead and copper galvanizing line. This is a challenging project, but the city will continue to evaluate the water and wastewater infrastructure and address these issues accordingly. Other post-employee, uh, employment benefits are OPEB and pension liabilities. As, uh, previously said, funding for the OPEB and pension liabilities remain a major concern for the city. The budget continues to address funding of these liabilities. The fiscal year 24 budget allocated funds towards both obligation, and the fiscal year 25 reflects a 15% increase in retiree healthcare. Um, during fiscal year 22, the city re-amortarized all of the pension costs, which resulted in the stabilization of the pension portfolio and, and leveling the assets to an annual amount of 19 million, um, for the next 25 years. The fiscal year 25 budget continues to reflect the implementation of this change. So the budget, pension budget is budgeted at 19 million dollars. And then the last area is the American Rescue Plan Act funds, and again, we spent a lot of time talking about it, and you've been allocating these funds. Um, so between you as a council, city administration, and the ARPA Advisory Committee, a, a great deal of time was spent in '23 to work through the process of allocating these funds to City Council ARPA Goals and Objectives, which were youth and family, neighborhood preservation and beautification, health initiatives, economic development, and housing. For fiscal year 25, we will continue to review the allocation of the remaining ARPA funds to invest in the programs, services, and infrastructure that will make the biggest impact on the quality of life of every Saginaw resident, both now and into the future. So looking at it from the fund perspective, so, um, this chart, uh, shows the breakdown of the 233.92 million dollars. Um, the general fund will represent 19% of the total budget, special revenue funds represents 34%, and the largest part of the budget is represented by the enterprise funds, which consists of the boat launch and water and sewer operations at 43%. Internal service funds represent around 4%, and then our fiduciary funds, which is the smallest fund, is less than 0.01%. There are specific expenditures that I'm not going to talk about in each of the areas that have impacted each of the areas. What, like, again, I mentioned that there's an increase in salaries due to the collective bargaining agreement that we settled in 2023. Um, there's increase in general liability insurance costs due to the current nation market conditions, national market. So the first fund that we're going to look at is the general fund. The general fund budget for fiscal year twenty-five is forty-four point five-six million, and this, again, represents a four point two-six million dollar increase. The general fund is nineteen percent of the total budget. Now, looking at each of the fund, the departments within the general fund, you'll notice certain increases. So in the Office of General Government, there will be about a five hundred and three thousand dollar increase. And outside of the items that we've already listed as some of the reasons affecting each of the funds, you will realize increase in the Office of Management and Budget, because we are actually adding a budget analyst position to, actually, budget analyst two positions to the complement. In the Office of the City Manager, the city administration is planning for a strategic planning session for fiscal year twenty-five. Largest increase will be realized in the Office of Elections, as we have two pri, we have two elections this upcoming year. We have the August primaries, and we have a, the November presidential election. In the Department of Fiscal Services, you will see a slight increase of nineteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars, and this is because the Office of Purchasing will be moving to digital, digitalizing their, their files. We also see a little change in personnel complement. We're adding a property appraiser while eliminating and assessing a technician. Community Public Safety Police will increase, will realize an increase of over nine hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. As already talked about the items that are affecting it, especially since you're going to see pension and retiree healthcare in that department, we will also be adding a deputy police chief to the complement, and this addition will assist with the succession planning in the department. We are going to continue with the McDonald Ford Municipal Buyback Program in this division. They have purchased a vehicle that's following this program, and so you see costs built into the budget of about forty-seven thousand five hundred. Community Public Safety Fire will increase two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, or almost three percent, and this is attributed to the retiree healthcare costs. And then we have some small increases in dues and training and development. The Department of Neighborhood Services and Inspection will realize a hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase from the previous year, and the majority of the increase is related to grant funds that we receive from Michigan Economic Development Corp., Mishta, or not Mishta, M D C, for the rewrite of the zoning ordinance. We will also be adding, to the personnel complement, we're adding a community development specialist. We will see a slight offset with them, because they will have changed the, actually, they paid off their vehicle lease payment for the Department of Inspections. In the Department of Public Services, you'll see increase of about two point two-nine million. And again, outside of the items I've already listed, we received a grant from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Community Project Fund during the current year. We received that, the fund, or the grant was for three million dollars. This budget reflects a two million dollar allocation for the year, and this was to, for the burial of utility lines. So we're going to see that in fiscal year twenty-five. And then, similar to the Police Department, they also are utilizing the McDonald Ford Municipal Buyback Program, and they will be replacing their vehicles. And the last appropriation center of the general fund is called the Other General Fund Expenditures, and this center increases roughly three percent, and this increase is directly related to the fifteen percent increase to retiree healthcare. The next fund that we're going to look at is your special revenue funds, and the special revenue funds account for proceeds from specific revenue sources that are legally restricted to expenditures that are for specific purposes. This fund accounts for about thirty-four percent of the total citywide budget, and it will be seventy-nine point five-nine million for fiscal year twenty-five. This is a thirty-two percent, or about, you know, seventy percent increase to the budget. These increases are attributed to, outside of the items already listed before, salary increases, general liability insurance and that. But in the majors, major and local street funds, you will see increase there because they have planned construction projects. This is something that was already discussed at the last meeting by Travis Hare, the city engineer. The ARPA Fund, just previously talked about, this, again, will be increasing the budget for, by fourteen point one-four million because of the different projects that will happen during the course of the year. There's also two new funds. Again, you have the State of Michigan Medical Facility Fund, and that will be twelve million dollars. Again, we received a grant of thirty point three million dollars. We're only using twelve million in fiscal year twenty-five. And then the newest fund is your National Opioid Settlement Fund. This fund accounts for the allocation of settlement dollars for the treatment, prevention, and education of opioid epidemic. We've budgeted this at a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. So the next fund type is your enterprise fund. Again, this accounts for services provided to the public on a user-charge basis. Enterprise Fund for fiscal year twenty-five is projected to be nine-nine point eight-six million, and this represents an increase of about eighteen million dollars, or twenty-two percent from the previous year. On the revenue side, for the year beginning July one, the Water and Sewer Operation and Maintenance Funds do reflect a council-approved rate increase. You approved rates last year. The budget continues with that. Now, looking at it from the expense side, the Sewer Operation and Maintenance Fund will increase six point one-one million, or to be like thirty-eight point two-eight million. And this increase is due to increases in planned capital purchases, capital improvements, as well as the debt service payment. These planned projects include, like I said, the Hancock CSO repair project, as well as the river crossing project. This department also adds a engineering technician asset management position to the complement. The Water Operation and Maintenance Fund will increase eleven point eight-nine million for a total of sixty-one point five-five million. This increase is due to increase in planned capital purchases and capital improvement projects, as well as debt service payment. These projects include the elevated storage tank, lead and copper replacement, and the birch-run parallel water main. For more detailed explanation of the changes for these funds, we do refer you to the presentation that was done by Mike Grignier and Phil Carwatt on the Sewer and Water Operation and Maintenance Fund. The next fund is your internal service funds, and these account for goods and services provided to one department by another on a cost reimbursement basis. So these funds represent approximately little more than four percent of the total citywide budget. And the internal service funds for fiscal year twenty-five is budgeted at nine point eight-seven million, and this represents a net increase of eight hundred thousand three fifty-four, or almost nine percent from the fiscal year twenty-four budget. And the increase in the internal service fund is largely due to, again, increases to I T for the computer software and going to a cloud-based format, increases in the motor pool fund as it relates to increases to motor vehicle supplies and repair costs, as well as purchasing of shop trucks through the McDonald Ford Municipal Buyback Program. And then the self-insurance fund increases significantly, and this is due to the increase in insurance rates in the national market because of the national economic condition. The last fund type we have is the fiduciary fund, and fiduciary funds account for the administration of property or assets that are owned by other entities beside the city. These funds represent approximately point zero-one percent of the total citywide budget. Fiduciary funds for fiscal year twenty-five is projected to be thirty-four thousand nine ten. This represents the same as fiscal year twenty-four. Now, the cemetery endowment funds accounts for, is accounted for in this fund type, and these funds are legally restricted resources and are twenty-five percent of the cemetery revenues collected in the general fund. These revenues can only be used for cemetery care purposes in accordance with the city So that's the conclusion of my presentation, and I'd like to say that the Office of Management and Budget understands that the budget can be overwhelming. We do spend about eight months working on it. So we do invite city council to meet with us to discuss any questions, concerns that you might have. And as part of the budget packet, OMB has provided several days and times in which we can meet with you and discuss it, or you can also schedule an appointment through the city manager's office. So at this point, I'm available for questions.
I've got a question, the same question I ask every year. When are we going to change the, do, do we need to take a look at the charter for the cemetery money?
The cemetery endowment fund?
Yes.
That's governed under state law, not the, not the charter.
Well.
Right, both.
Yeah. Both, I thought, okay.
But, but the charter repeats what the state law says.
We got to pass some money. We got to get our cemeteries up to code. Yes, Councilwoman Sylvia?
Thank you very much. I will be setting up a meeting, because when I have a lot of questions, I like to. But one of my questions is, in regards to new positions, do you have a list of those new positions?
I can provide you a list, and we also have a list in our summary of positions in the budget document, but I can send that to you.
Okay, and something you said that I just wanted to ask you now, if I can. You said HUD, you received three million, but you only spoke about two million. Where's the other million?
So the million, well, we're spending money on it right now. So we received a grant from the Department of HUD, or Urban, Department of Urban and House Development, yes, HUD, for the Community Project Fund. That's something that actually Cassie and I worked on this past year. Part of it will be spent in the current year, because we're doing work right now. We budgeted bulk of it in twenty-five, and the remaining amount will be budgeted in twenty-six.
All right. I'll set my meeting up. Thank you very much for your presentation.
I don't know if she's still talking, because she's so quiet down there. I can hardly hear you. Are you finished?
I'm good for now.
Councilman Ball.
Does the city plan on building any houses, or are they partnering with anybody to build any houses any time in the future?
I would say that we would be looking at, this budget right now does have a million dollars in it for our home ARC funds, which are funds that we received last year that's being managed by the Community Development Black Grant Program, and part of that does have some housing component to it.
New housing?
I believe so.
Today in Detroit, Vice President Kamala, she talked about money that's set aside for housing, and how everything was unequally yoked. So I think that we will probably see some funds being available, because part of their campaign is money that they earmarked to build homes, not just in Michigan, but all over, because that seems to be a big problem with everybody.
Can I add something to this?
Yes.
Our Community Development Black Grant also partners with Habitat for Humanities on housing, so as they've been developing new housing for them, we are in partnership with, with them through our home program.
And they're beginning to start building, so they say they're going to start building more of the houses where families come in. You do your little program, and then the community come in and help build. Any other questions? I know that it's overwhelming. It's a whole lot.
Yes.
Please, my fellow councilpersons, if you have questions, don't assume. Please don't assume. I need you to contact the office. Contact city managers, contact that office, and set up an appointment. Please do not be out here assuming stuff, because that's how information gets twisted. If you've got any questions, I need you to ask them, please. Anybody got any more questions? Yes.
Great presentation, by the way, and we talked about a couple of the items that I saw right off the bat, because I've already started reading the budget. I'm at page thirty-something, I'm three hundred, but we'll get there, like I do every year. I've been writing down a few questions, and you covered them, because there was a substantial increase from last year, so that, a lot of this presentation that you gave tonight, if anybody had questions on that that's watching in the public, they'll understand where those are coming from. So great, so thank you for that. And also, you touched upon, on these insurance costs, and I even saw that within my own household last year, just car insurance and different things, and so that, that makes a lot of sense there, too. With the lead lines, the question I would have there is, I'm, I'm assuming that we are still pursuing grants for that, because I see our director shaking his head, because there is stuff from the federal level and the state level, and it's another thing I try to explain to people, too. The money just doesn't come, and they just write check, check. It's all grants that we have to compete for, and once those bills are passed. So thank you for, thank you for that, for shaking your head. That's all I have, thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Bland.
Thank you, Yolanda.
Great job, Mr. Manager.
And that concludes the management update.
Anybody have any questions for the city manager?
Yes. Thank you very much, ma'am. I've had some information in regards to, well, I'd like to get some information in regards to Civitank Recreation Facility. I know there was two bids on that. One bid, I believe, failed through, and I was just wondering where that process is right now with the remaining bid.
Okay, yep, we'll put that on follow-up and get your info.
Okay.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Here, that takes us to the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city webpage and on S G T V, channel one ninety-one. I need a motion to approve leaving room for exceptions.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. Do we have any exceptions?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question, my number seven.
Is there any more exceptions? Any more exceptions? Any more exceptions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
Item number seven is to approve to increase the contract with Lois K. Contracting Company by one million two hundred and fifty thousand for a new total of three million one hundred and seventeen thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars for the water and sewer road patch restoration project for the Public Services Department Engineering Division. That was Councilman Ball.
I was wondering why, why did we increase it? What, what was it? Why did we increase the budget for that?
Yeah, so what's happening with this one? If you can go back in time, we used to bid this, bid this multi-year. We used to do patches every year, but if you remember, kind of through COVID, prices of material was so volatile that we would do a three-year bid, and we would only get one-year bid, because nobody control, can control the price of asphalt or concrete. So the last time we bid it, we only did it per one year, because we were only getting one-year bid. So Lois K. was the low bidder. We bid this back in February of twenty twenty-three. There were four bidders. The low bid was about two point two-nine million, the high bid was two point nine, so about a seven hundred thousand dollar difference between the low and the high. The second bidder was at about two point six, so three to four hundred thousand project for the Public Services Department Engineering Division that was council involved.
I was wondering why, why did we increase it? What, what, what was it? Why did we increase the budget for that?
Yeah, so what's happening with this one? If you can go back in time, we used to bid this, bid this multi-year. We used to do patches every year, but if you remember, kind of through COVID, prices of material was so volatile that we would do a three-year bid, and we would only get one-year bid because nobody control, can control the price of asphalt or concrete. So the last time we bid it, we only did it per one year because we were only getting one-year bid, so Lois K. was the low bidder. We bid this back in February of 2023. There were four bidders. The low bid was about 2.29 million, the high bid was 2.9, so about a $700,000 difference between the low and the high. The second bidder was at about 2.6, so 300 to 400,000 dollars lower than Lois K., who was the low bid. Lois K. approached us and said, even though the prices of materials still continue to increase, concrete has went up a lot more again, that they would withhold their prices for one more year, so I see that as a benefit to the city, but the cost increasing for every, all the materials still for them to hold their prices. So this contract is to redo all the patches that we create from the water and sewer, from our maintenance and service. We got about 200, or 2,000 patches that we're behind on because of the expedition of the lead and copper and trying to get all this stuff replaced. It's, it's more critical to me to get the lead lines out and the copper lines in, and then trying to catch up with the patches. I mean, that's just one of them that we do, but any water breaks, sewer breaks, catch. So this is to redo asphalt roads, concrete streets, and then the sidewalks. The original bid was for about 350 patches. This one will let us do an additional 240 patches at the low bid price from a year ago.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Back to Melson to approve number seven. Support.
It's been moved as second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Takes us to board and commission and committee reports.
Do we have any reports? Any community reports?
Well, we, the school board lays down, I mean, we did have a meeting, but I think the, the city manager did report on that, but I, I was trying to think of anything important that we wanted to know about. They still got vacant schools, and they're out for sale. I think we can, if somebody would like to, they said they got a bunch of mold and all that kind of stuff in this room, but anybody know anybody that want to renovate them? Get with them.
Okay. Anyone else, yes?
I have a question for, uh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ball. The schools are for sale, is there a list in the price?
No, they don't have a list in the price.
Okay.
I can say that, but.
Okay.
You can't approach that.
Okay.
I think they mentioned they're going to have a report coming out within the next year or so that details the schools, and some of them, they said, aren't salvageable, and some, a few of them are.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Councilwoman Ball.
Yes.
Particularly though, they're going to be using, once Sasa closes up, for that demolition to be completed, they're going to be putting some of the faculty into the old Handley Building, which we have also put under historic study, so that appears to be, by their own, you know, admission that they're housing people in it, that that would be the most viable building that they own. So really, if we could get somebody to look at that and push that one, we know that that one's able to, you know, safe for human beings to be in, so I just wanted to add that, and thank you for mentioning that, Michael.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk.
We're at appointment of board, commission, and committee members.
I need a motion to approve one through two, leaving room for exceptions.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any exceptions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Takes us to ordinance introduction. We have one on the agenda. It's to amend section 12.042, Citizen Police Advisory Commission of Chapter 12, Boards and Commissions of Title I Administrative Code of the City of Saginaw Code of Ordinances O-204.
I need a motion to adopt.
Introduce, motion to introduce.
I'm sorry.
Motion to introduce.
It says adopt.
Well, that's not what this says. Motion to introduce.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions? This ordinance will be laid over, oh, I need to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. This ordinance will be laid over per charter provision. Madam Clerk.
Takes us to resolutions. Our first is establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district at 122 South Hamilton Street.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Our second resolution is adopting the resolution to permit the consumption of alcoholic beverages on public property on Johnson Street.
Need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
It's not on the whole Johnson Street, is it?
Oh, no, no. It's probably just in the downtown area.
All right, you should have been more specific, but, all right. Thought they was having another block party now.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Madam Clerk.
Takes us to miscellaneous business.
Do we have any miscellaneous business? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a motion to adopt the resolution to amend the allocation to women of colors from 200,000 to 275,000 for eligible expenses.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Do we know what building this is for, and has that purchase been vetted with Guide House? Do we know that?
The address is 3057 Davenport, and yes, it has been reviewed by Guide House.
I'm not against it, but I, I really was wanting to see the report cards, and we were going to do that by the end of the month. I just got, like, we've got other people who are asking for money, more money as well, and so we, we got to make up our mind. Are we going to do some, not all, or are we going to just wait for the report cards? I'm not saying I'm against giving them any money. I wish that we get, had we known about this time restriction that's on us with signing of the contract or whatever. You know, but you've got other agencies who've asked for more money. Yes.
Is this more money or moving money?
No. I thought it's, did you say more or move?
It's additional.
It's more money.
The money she asked for.
Until what we've got. Last meeting, we, we motioned, or we made a resolution so that they get moving. This one is adding more money. And you've got other groups that wanted more money. I don't have a problem with giving people money, but we need to see where we are.
And just an administrative clarification, and Clerk Bolzman can correct me if I'm wrong, but all I heard was the motion was for eligible expenses. It didn't state whether it was programming or capital, so from an administrative standpoint, there might need to be a motion to amend to clarify that?
Yeah, I motioned to amend it for capital expenses.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, there needs to be support.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Now we're for discussion. Yes.
And this money is coming from the, which budget?
Workforce Development.
Okay, all right. I'm fine.
So if I can, speaking to the mayor's point, I hear what you're saying, and I agree with you, we have to use, but 31 years, I believe, is the track record, and I think considering what they're asking for, it's worth it. It's, it's, it's worth it. 31 years, I, I, how many other organizations going to come with a proven track record for what it is they do?
Yes.
I'm going to have to concur with Councilman Williams.
That's fine, that's fine. Hear me well. I'm not saying that I'm against it. What I'm saying is, is that we've got other people asking, and we need to get their report cards, everybody that we've done for, so that we can see how much money is left over, because there may be even more to give them, okay? We can't keep going back and forth with certain groups, so there may be more. Again, I have no problem with it. I just thought that we agreed that we would look at report cards before we started allocating out any new money to new groups, I mean, even existing groups. I'm sorry, I shouldn't say new. Yes.
I would, I would have to say the same thing. I mean, we're two weeks out from getting a full picture of just how much money might be coming back to us, how, you know, what progress people are making. I have nothing but respect for women of colors, but at the same time, I think we need to have a full picture of the information that we're going to be dealing with. And I feel, I, I feel like that across the board with pretty much everybody who's asking at this point, that we're just too close to getting that update to, you know. I think it would be wise to wait.
Yes, sir.
Consider the fact that you, you guys are concerned about money that we maybe have it back, maybe getting back from other organizations. This money's already allocated in a bucket, so it's not, that's not going to affect the money that you're getting back. So therefore, you know, I don't think it's an issue. I mean, they already, they just told us that they about to be evicted, and that they already have some money for their building, so let's get this building out of the way so we can keep moving.
Yes.
Hold on.
Yeah, my comment is to it with the presentation tonight, $75,000 to get into the building. This is what's going to do it for them. If we remember, they were here not too long ago, they were looking at a building for 600,000, so I think they've, they've really went back out, like, like Councilman Williams says, and they've done phenomenal work in the area. I, I just think it's a small ask now, just to, so they can get a building, they're being evicted, they've got to continue to do the work.
I need to set the record straight. Have they been evicted?
Yes.
No, you have a certain time to get out. And so I'm, I'm saying, again, I have no issues with it. The issue I have is that we've got other people who ask. That's my issue, and that's mine. I own it.
I said we vote. Call the question. I'd like to call for the question.
Call for the vote.
Give a second.
Second.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Ball.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Bench.
Yes.
Councilmember Astash.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Flores.
Yes.
And Mayor Moore.
Yes, it didn't make no difference.
Let me call him a question.
Call for the, what?
Let me call him a question.
That was called for the question.
Yeah.
Can I hear the vote? I mean, can I hear the motion again?
So we just took the vote on the call for the question, so the vote now has to be on the amend, the amendment to the main motion to state that it's for capital expenses.
Any more discussion?
You can't have discussion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Okay, so now you're back to the main motion to adopt the resolution to amend the allocation to women of colors from 200,000 to 275,000 for eligible capital expenses.
It's been moved as second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Madam Clerk.
Still under miscellaneous business.
Any other miscellaneous business? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I had one more for, to adopt the resolution to amend the allocation to the Mexican-American Council from 270,000 to 330,000 for eligible capital expenses.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes. Who knows, somebody?
Annie wants.
Yes.
Uh, this was the motion that we amended last week to allow them to use their capital, and now we're adding another 75,000 to them. And having spoken with John Ayala today, and having a meeting set up with him for later on in the week, it is my understanding that they are not asking for 75,000 in addition to what they already have at this time.
Yes.
It's $60,000? And then I also spoke with Mr. Delion today, and then, and Mr. Ayala, and they both said that they're in need of the funds to complete the work. The motion that we had done last meeting was for women of color. The motion on April 8th was for the Mexican-American Council. Just for clarification.
Yes.
I spoke with Mr. Ayala, too, this afternoon.
We need to talk up, please.
Oh, okay. I talked to Mr. Ayala this afternoon, and his understanding was that was all the money that they were getting, and they had run into problems as far as more things that they weren't aware of after they were peeling these layers off, because it is an older home that's never had no repairs. So he said if they were eligible, they could get it, but he said he was, you know, working with what he had. That was my understanding, and he didn't think they would be getting anymore.
Has Guide House cleared all that is?
Well, I mean, they, they don't really have an opinion on whether council allocates more money. They gave an opinion that.
Okay.
The MAC was expending funds and allocating funds in accordance with their, with their award.
Yes, Councilwoman, I want Ms. Sylvia.
I know you, Mayor was talking about report cards, but also on, on this particular one, I have two things. One is that the Mexican American Council did receive a report card, and it was very well from Guide House. Second, if there's information that we should have before we get to the vote, I'd like to get it beforehand. That would help me some, you know, maybe going forward, so I can get information, you know, in regards to what's going on. That'd be great. Thank you.
Yes.
I'll just add, I do concur with what Councilwoman Garcia said. Mr. Ayala indicated that they've run into more issues that they weren't even aware of prior to them coming to us at the previous meeting, asking. The reason why I think we should hold off until they have an idea of just how much money they're going to run into, so they don't have to continue to come back, is I suspect with the issues that they are facing, it's probably not a $60,000 fix, so. And that was the conversation we had. They're aware of the fact that, you know, they weren't necessarily slated to get any extra funds. They certainly wouldn't turn them down. They do have work that needs to be done, but they also don't have like a hard figure on how much it's actually going to cost, so I'd like to make sure that we're setting them up to succeed, and he said that they're perfectly fine completing the work that they're doing right now with the amount of money that they have. So at a later date, if we were to get the report cards, not necessarily on the MAC, but on everything else, and then come back to the table and reconsider it at that time, that was my understanding, was what, what the understanding they were operating under.
Yes, call for the Williams.
Another proven agency. The most work we would have to do if they did come back again is say yes or no.
Again, we're going to call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. As had, Madam Clerk.
Still under miscellaneous business. You're still under miscellaneous business.
Do we have any more miscellaneous businesses that we need to handle? Need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.